Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on the 23rd day of October 2019 at the hour of 4:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on October 18th, 2019 at 1:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. Every Board Member is present with the exception of Jason Starkey who notified the Board that he was not going to be here today. Let me please have everyone stand for the invocation of the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all its blessings. Keep us ever mindful of our responsibility to serve our community. Bless us with wisdom and guide us in our decisions so that we may better be better stewards of your gifts. We ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord.
We'll be on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. That includes staff and Board. I'd like to say as you, staff and Board.
Couple of things that I wanted to mention because we didn't have time to bring them up. I just wanted to mention that the PUB had called us asking if we needed any equipment or help. They heard about the emergency that we had up at the island and we kind of responded that, "Thank you very much, but we were okay at the district." So the things that happened at the island were contained to the island mostly. I don't think there was anything else to the mainland or Laguna Vista. But our new stations were taken care of and our wastewater plants at the island. The other thing that I wanted, I did thank them for that. We did get ahold of Mr. Smith, the City Manager, and I requested, you know, if they needed any help of any kind also with equipment, then we were available to help them out. I know they're in the bind out there. I don't think they have fixed all the poles yet, but they're working on it. The other thing, we had an Island Chamber of Commerce, we had a showcase out there on last Thursday, the 17th, and we had a table for us that we presented pamphlets, the smart meter, smart water information that we had them signing up for and we assisted them. Eddie was there, Minnie, Mary, Daisy, myself, and who else was other ones?
Zelina.
Okay, Zelina was there too. So I just wanted to mention that we had a good time out there. Anybody was welcome to that one. And there was a lot of people from the island.
It was a business showcase, business to business and resident showcase and then kind of everyone kind of meet and greet.
Right, meet and greet was mostly. The, let me see, what else? The Austin meeting that we had, we met with Long Island Village also and we requested some information from Texas Water Development Board and they kind of said that they were going to be looking into assisting Long Island to do the water district. So that's set up already. We were, two representatives from Long Island were there, and then Charles and I and Eddie and Robert were there too also. We took the whole crew just to make sure that we didn't miss anything. So they did talk about, we did talk about the bonds that were going into ourselves and assisting them, you know, to get their meter system out there. It was a good meeting also. Just wanted to bring up the Board that we took care of that also. And that's all I have right now.
There's a lot going on. It's been a long time since we've been here. Jesus, our financial audit committee, our financial auditor asked, he left a card. He asked if everyone would send, if the Board would contact him just to discuss a few things about the audit coming up, standard procedure, nothing important.
Right, at your own time, you know, if you're available afterwards, I don't think this meeting's going to last that long.
No, but he left his information, so if he wanted to speak to each Board Member individually about the audit and some other issues and so, nothing, no issues, just discussions.
No issues, it's just questions.
Yes, questions and discussions. So I said that I would mention that. Anything else? Did you have something or?
Yeah, we're at the invitation for public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm like, can I do public comment now?
We're in public comment now, yes.
I don't know if you guys have a second for just a comment section? Yes, not?
Can you state your name and topic for the Board for the record?
We'll share. We'll share.
So my name's Carol Bolstead and I'm a resident on the island. I purchased a piece of property out at Beach Access 6 and that's what I gave them was basically what it's at. If you go to Beach Access 6 and there's a telephone pole directly across from it, that's my first pole. Go south two poles, you'll hit my property. And I got 400 feet wide from the road to the bay. Does not include anything on the beach at all. So what I'm looking to build there is going to be a multi-commercial type of facility. It's actually going to look like a big castle and I'm going to put a moat out in front of it. And I'm going to try initially, my plan is to try and stay out of that thousand-foot dune line to avoid some of those issues that I'm going to come into. So I had talked with Charles over here about potentially, I'm right next to the drainage that's a 60-foot long, or 60-foot wide designated drainage for there. So we had discussed potentially getting the firewater to come in to fill the moat periodically and be able to drain out of there. So at this point, I've purchased the land, I'm still paying off on it, have to sell a house or two, but wanted to get this kind of in front of you just as something to be thinking about. We're going to try and hopefully punch through and connect into just, you know, a construction trailer to start getting a presence out there. So it's going to be kind of something that's going to grow. I've talked with the Small Business Association, you know, it's going to be under $5 million because that's what they think they're, you know, a normal small business like this could start up as maybe a $4 billion on the construction cost. And just wanted to throw that out in front of you guys to be thinking about for the future and hoping it's something we could all work with.
Wish you success and encourage your development.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I just have another one that I was for that. Is I sent a text to the Board Members and requesting that we may leave Monday if they shut down the electrical power in the afternoon. We never left because they never shut it off, so.
They did like 9:00 PM.
In case they did, we're just going to close it down. They never did shut it down. Or unless they did and the power didn't turn off here, could be one of them.
It wasn't until about 9:00 PM.
Then they said at 9:00 again, so, and it didn't happen at my house. So I don't know if they did shut it down or not, but that was what, but I wanted to mention that we didn't leave the office. We didn't shut it down until 5:00.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Anything in closing? Moving on to item number four, consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting of September 25th, 2019. Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Taken by Mr. Abalos. Charles is in favor.
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item number five, General Managers' Report.
Yes, sir. All Mr. Chairman and members of Board also, and the information that we've been waiting from our engineer is coming in on the 28th by Monday, all the information. And Charles is going to put everything together with the numbers for the Bond Planning Committee so we can have another meeting with them and present what we found for the May Bond Elections. Any questions on that or comments? But we will be having a meeting on the 4th of November.
How are we doing on our timeline and what we're going with generally? I know it's not the topic I guess to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, we're on schedule. I mean, as far as the, basically all the draft reports where we've provided comments, all those comments are going to be incorporated on that report that's coming October 28th and so we'll have a final to, you know, a complete report to present to the committee on November 4th. And that's when we can start deciding, you know, how to wait project or, you know, how we're going to get ready for the actual order that would be presented in February.
And the next one is audio/video presentation that we will be receiving some information this Friday and, well, we already have the video, the third video that's a short one. We already have that one available. I don't know if, we haven't seen that one yet, but if y'all want to see it, we can send it to y'all. The third video, that's a short one, will be presented at the City Councils. I haven't seen it myself, but we may look at it tomorrow and see if there's anything missing in there. The other video that we had made more corrections on will not be coming in until the prior week after then. That was a lot of modifications that were done editing, so they're going to take a little longer. What else do you have for Enrique?
We're waiting on the quote for the fourth video, the movie trailer, the two minutes. We're waiting also for it to come back next week.
Next week? That's the fourth video they're working on. So we requested some more. Okay, and that's, any questions on that, or comments? We'll be calling you so you can come see the video whenever we're ready on that.
I liked the way you said it last time, email's good.
Yes. I liked it, but it was a minor stuff that needed to be edited, so anyhow, that'll be done next week. The other one. So the third bullet that I have in there is November, December meetings, because I don't, I think that's what's next. The November meeting.
Can we get on the correct calendar?
We are going to have one. This one? November, the first meeting is the 13th, but then the second is on the 27th. Christmas is on the 27th.
The 28th is Thanksgiving, so.
Oh, Thanksgiving, I'm sorry. Yeah, Thanksgiving, the 28th.
Why don't we make the meetings on the 6th and the 20th?
The first and the third?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. At 5:30 regular time?
Sure.
Yes?
Final day. You guys like 5:30 or 4:30 better?
Personally, 5:30.
Okay, then we'll do 5:30.
Okay, then, once we have those, we'll talk about the December. Just want to talk about the November meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Is that conclusion? Moving to item six, presentation by Grant Access on the Media Affairs Plan.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, staff. My name is Victor Baldevinos, this is my beautiful wife, Alicia Baldevinos. We are Grant Access. We've been working really hard to put this together and a plan actually takes a little longer than expected only because you've got to first identify your audience. Once you've identified your audience, you can actually cater what you're going to put out specifically on the message that you're trying to convey. We put a short PowerPoint together highlighting some of the things that we've done. Before you, you have a sheet that we'll be going over and the progress that we've made so far. The one thing that I want to touch on and I want to steal my wife's thunder just because I want to, is that our Facebook page, we were finally able to get with the help of staff permission to take over the Facebook page and so now it belongs to the District. Before it was just someone, something someone made and really no one had ownership of it. So we were really happy that we could take that because that was a real big task because we didn't want it in the wrong hands. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here today. I have a short PowerPoint, not really short, but I'm going to go through it quickly. You had a copy of the draft plan in your packets and this appendix kind of just is part of the section that's in there. So I'll touch base on that. So on the, and I have the page numbers on there first, give you first the section of the plan. So this is our Media Affairs update. So first, this is a quick summary on the plan itself or status. So we have been working on Part One, which is plan objectives, the core goal areas, audience analysis, and Appendix A is part of that. Messaging, challenges, current efforts, and suggested programs and materials. We've met with the Media Affairs Committee 24 times and reviewed it and kind of made it a little bit better. The next section, the Part Two, is what it's going to, we're going to start working on now, which is the goals and objectives, implementation, performance measures, prioritization and timeline, and then the Media Affairs procedures, which is pretty social media and the crisis management, what it's regarding our media response. So plan objectives, I have some short information, some information on there that was included. So we have three objectives, enhance transparency and gain support of customers and other stakeholders to enable the Luton Mother Water District to provide the funds for additional investments needed to renew its aging infrastructure. Also to communicate the efforts of staff and benefits that new infrastructure will provide to customers in terms of improved water quality and enhanced service delivery. And to provide the essential communication support to allow for necessary increase in water service rates to recover the costs of services. Our core goal areas. These are overarching goals that provide the foundation of the plan framework and we will use them to develop communication strategies and outreach programs to support both. One is to increase public awareness of the District and two is to inform and educate District customers and stakeholders. Audience analysis. Okay, so we broke it down to as much as we could because that way we could be able to target media where they can see it and how we will reach them best. One is our water and wastewater customers. And that goes back to Appendix A, which we have listed as first and foremost are employees who are customers, our single family property owners, the residential customers, the multi-tenant property owners and landlords, limited English speakers and Spanish speakers, low-income residents, homeowner associations, golf club, RV parks, retirement communities, businesses, builders and property developers. And then as a section by itself, customers affected by projects as those, as we work through those, as they come up. And educational institutions, youth, paid through states, high school and college. And so for each, this will help us because there's goals for each one on how we want to inform them or educate and keep them up to date on what is going on with the water district. Then the message themes, the channels of how to reach them, and then partners that we can make in order to reach those customers, the audience. Do you have questions on that or you just want to question? So then, that was the water and wastewater customers. After that, we have possible recyclable water customers, educational institutions, which we touched upon, media networks, elected officials, community leaders, and non-governmental organizations and public agencies. Our messaging, this goes to page, the white at the bottom. Working to transcend the challenges facing water conservation, pollution prevention, and resource recovery efforts, the District can develop a clear, direct, and consistent messaging that builds awareness and drives home benefits of its services by using targeted messages for specific audiences and channels. So this also links back to how we're going to contact them on Appendix A. And then moving on to challenges, some of the challenges that we outlined are, many customers may be unclear about the District's role. Brought up the role as an economic developer, as a green industry, a wastewater provider, and a lot of people still consider us as part of a city because they're not aware that we are separate entity. Customers do not really adopt the dire pollution prevention behaviors and that is going back to water conservation and being aware of putting fats and oils and grease down the drain and those type of programs that we can address. The public is not aware of District resource recovery efforts and the recent rate increase may have an adverse effect on public opinion. Those were the challenges. Now, the core message themes. So our mission, the Water District's mission, is to proactively serve our customers by providing reliable, safe, high-quality water and wastewater sources. So the core messages are at the heart of the District's communications and will relate back to that mission statement and engage the public by incorporating initiatives that educate and unite us as a community reliant on and responsible for clean water. So it's not just the Water District's responsibility to service that water, but it's also the community needs to take ownership and responsibility for keeping it clean or environmentally. Our current efforts. So currently, we have a program, a conservation pollution prevention program for leak toilets. We use the Blue Dying Water Leak Tablets that we provide to the customers. Our educational program, we do plant tours, facility class field trips, and participate in Career Day at the school. And there's educational handouts that goes all the way back, which we will be updating. Electronic media, there's a website which we are working on making clear and more concise. And the public relations, there's participation in community events, which is the shrimp cook-off. So that's what we're currently doing. And some of the things that other Water Districts are doing that we're suggesting, which would be same in the Media Affairs role, is a conservation and pollution prevention program. If you go to page eight, there's a whole bunch of stuff listed underneath, but I'll just touch the highlights, for residential and then also for commercial. There's rebate programs that are offered through the state, educational programs, handouts and flyers that we can provide when they come in about water conservation and the no-fog, which is like the bad soil and grease. Event display posters for Career Day and other community events, open house materials, promotional items that we can get to promote, for example, grease scrapers or call us first, call the waters first before doing something that's not good for the water and drain. And then there's other print materials that we're suggesting on here as well and of course electronic media. The electronic media would be the social media that we're seeking to capture now. So next is media relations update. Okay, so that was kind of the update for the plan. This is other things that we've been working on. So we began to create those partnerships with the PISPI Press and Parade, Coastal Current. We are working, those are the ones that are done. We're still working on meeting up with the Valering Star and the Brown Trail Herald. We have also contacted the Chamber of Commerce and met with them so that we can be in better communication of any notices that need to go out. Fortisville ISD as well and South Padre Al and their Public Information Officer to make sure that we're all talking to each other. It's such a small community, we need to be able to do that. We still need to go and talk to the City of Fortisville, Town of Laguna Vista, and TV stations to get their contact information so that, and names so that when there's a need for their media outlets, we have all that in place. Local print media. So we prepared a scheduled water service interruption notice for, when they were servicing, for testing the valves on the island on the 16th, that's what we say. And so we got that press release on, in the press, so probably the week before, so they were able to get, it was Thursday, so about a week notice of what was going on. So we worked with, yes, with Joel and Carlos and Robert to make sure that that was done. And I also emailed that information to the KOA, Kier 19, and Coast Guard Station, which report in the affected area. So, and the Chamber of Commerce and the City of South Padre Al to make sure that they had all the information. There weren't any surprises, they had almost a week to prepare for that scheduled water interruption. In progress, we're working on an editorial calendar to release print articles every maybe two weeks so that there's information out there about water conservation or something coming out or a public notice. But if there isn't anything immediate, of immediate concern, we can do just an editorial piece so that we have that name out there, that information, and we're creating the relationship with the community and the press. And then the Laguna Mother Water District newsletter, we're in the process of designing that so we can get information out that's more pertinent and it'll go out to employees and posted on the website. Next is social media update. So we were able to, as Victor explained, claim the Laguna Mother Water District website that had been automatically generated because there were some pictures and locations, I think 104 people had, had already used it as a location. It already had 33 likes and followers. So we claimed that and finally got approved. So we quickly updated the picture, the profile, the security, so that now we can work on a design. So I've been in collaboration with Orlando in the IT Department to make sure that he has access to everything that I do. And he's working on creating an email address so that when we do sign up for Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, it's on a Laguna Mother Water District email that will continue and belong to the Water District. The website, we're working, working with them also to streamline the homepage and design the site a little more clearly and we're creating a news archive page so that any news articles will go there instead of the front page. The front page will only be the relevant news and everything will be archived for, so that we can research and it'll still be searchable when you look up Water District on the internet. Lastly, so there's more updates to come. The challenge for every business is that every- The challenge for every business is that everyone sees and uses social media from a different perspective. So, and that also asking which social media site you should have presence on is like asking which freeway you put our billboards. So that's why we're touching upon LinkedIn, Instagram, and Twitter as well as Facebook to make sure we are, most of the highways to be given. And then we'll work on what else we need to do. Without a social media strategy, you're posted online. So we want to make sure we have this plan in place so that we have a strategy and we know what we're doing and what we don't want to do. Because we need to make sure that we're complying with what you all are wanting to, the direction you want us to go in. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to say I was quite surprised at such a high degree of professionalism, thoroughness, and thought that you put into this plan. And Alex, this all started with you and what you thought the district ought to go the direction. And I'm very encouraged and I'm very optimistic.
It's more in-depth than I intended to say.
Huh?
It's more in-depth than I intended to say.
Oh, I mean, yeah. That's why, I mean, I just can't see us going wrong. I mean, I'm just impressed.
Well, as a builder, you know that you need a strong foundation in order to build up. And so that's what we wanted to deliver today. Now, it's not complete, but it's almost there. The other thing to realize is when you're trying to convey a message, your audience from Long Island Village, for instance, are going to be a very different audience than the golf course in Laguna Vista. So with that in mind, it's important to cater the message accordingly. For instance, at Long Island Village, they have mailboxes that you can put, you know, a sheet in there for the people to read versus in the golf course, you can easily send out a Facebook or Twitter message and they'll get it right away. So it's important to realize that and understand that. The second part to this is develop a process. If someone walks in the front door today and they're Channel Five or whomever it is, they're greeted at the front, but the people at the front don't have a process in place in order to address whatever it is that they want. So we're addressing that with one sheet that they will be able to fill out. And the reason we need that is to make sure that we have a process in place, one. And two, to identify what their needs are so we can make sure to get the appropriate.
Accurate information.
Yes, that's correct.
An accurate response.
So targeted messages, that's super, super important. That's probably the most important thing that you guys want to work on or have us work on. It can be anything from water conservation to the school district and identifying how the Water District can be career paths for students that are graduating. So all these things you have to really think about and you have to put in the plan. Why? Because now, guess what? You apply for grants, it's in the plan. You can actually reflect to that and place it in the grant if you decide to go in that direction at a later time. So I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Very good.
Yeah, I had the same thought as her when I first saw the information. I thought, oh, man, we're really going to do a lot here. And so the concern that I had, which I mentioned to Victor, was the implementation. But of course, all that takes time. You have to build the templates for a lot of these things. And they know that, and I think we've talked about that enough. But, yeah, it's a lot of stuff. It's very comprehensive and it's going to take.
It's very progressive and it's a new direction.
Yeah, it's certainly a new direction. And had I known a year ago that all I had to do is change PIO to media consultant, oh. But nonetheless, here we are. And I'm glad that we've come this far, at least. And it's quite an undertaking, but they're not afraid. I'm not afraid, so. And I think it is going to be good for our district to have a professional voice, you know, if you will, especially at a time of crisis.
Rebranding.
Absolutely. That's why we're here.
Thanks for putting in an intelligent plan to it. How do we invoice this? You guys invoice us per work or per hour? How's that working?
I'll let her answer that.
Yes, it's per hour, but it's kind of, also, I had, when I had submitted a proposal, it was per hour, but it kind of already had an idea of how much it was going to be per, for example, the plan, how much time is going to go in there. So there was different, already a breakdown. Now, above and beyond that, then it's just per hour.
But it's not unlimited.
Yes, and they asked me to invoice monthly, so.
Excellent. Make sure you've worked on it.
I do have, just, I guess at some point, because I do have some comments on this one, but we can get, if we can set up a meeting to go over some of that. But I do have some suggestions on your matrix here.
Excellent. And for that matter, if anyone has any suggestions, please send them our way. You can send them to the GM and then he'll get those messages to us. Now, for everyone here, we have these Toilet Tank Leaks Detecting Tablets, and everyone will get their one on the way out. That's our first media push, so thank you all very much.
One thing you might want to do in the Facebook end, the website, and I don't know that we have it currently, but I think you ought to list the directors with pictures just so the people know who the directors are.
I know the School District has photos of all of your board members.
They are on the website, so I can take them from the website and put them on the Facebook.
Facebooks?
Yeah, we're going to redesign the Facebook page. It was just, since it was already out there, all we did was update the pictures and the profile and of course, the security. And, but we are going to redesign and kind of make, kind of make a big hoopla when we release the new website.
The goal is to get people to leave, not to leave the negative feedbacks or take the constructive criticism and accept it and address it, but not the, "My water tastes terrible and my bill is too expensive." You know, "My water's always out," you know, all that. But, you know, address the constructive criticism, which there is, and it's good to hear the feedback, but get it, you know, not fire back.
Exactly, yeah.
One of the objectives is to direct people to our website, which is getting lots of changes. And some of those changes are links to our associations, which provide the necessary documentation to address some of these issues that are out there sometimes. So if it's that simple, yeah.
Not get the haters out there and hating and creating negativity and bad threads.
Yes, to get ahead of that information. That's the whole objective.
Yes, and we are linking everything too. Outside of that, the fact our, the Facebook shortcut is at LMWD.org. That's the shortcut for that. So that everything is kind of linked together. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for your time and efforts. That concludes, moving along to item seven, Director of Operations Report, Robert.
Chairman, members of the board. I passed out some pictures that I wanted to, as I told Mr. Gaván. That first set of pictures deals with the lagoon. I had brought those pictures back in July, a few months back, and give you an idea of what's transparent, or transpired, rather. That first picture is where we first started excavating on the lagoon. The second one is where we pretty much completed the excavating. And the third one is current. That is the way the lagoon looks now, as of yesterday. It's complete, the pumps are working, the water is being transferred from the lagoon into the reservoir. And that's the one where we saved approximately $140,000 or so.
Robert, I'd like to mention something on that part. Did you see the third picture here? That lagoon is made for settling. So all the sludge goes down to the bottom and the clean water stays on top. And that's what we're pumping back to the reservoir, recycling the water back. That's the main purpose of it.
Yeah, and that water is already treated. So it goes back.
That's a flowing water?
I'm sorry?
That's a fluent water?
Backwash. Is it backwash from the filtration system? Oh, okay.
Can you clarify?
How often do we have to clean out the lagoon again?
Well, that's the first time we've done that in about, what, 20, 30?
30 years?
So hopefully, a long time.
That's correct.
But we have.
It's already treated water, so there's not a bunch of smush junk in it, right? It's already been.
Right. We did buy, you did authorize and give permission on the budget this year to buy a dredger. So that's something that we will be using on an ass needed basis. So hopefully, we don't have to go through this process again. That dredger will be used not only in the lagoon but also reservoir there at Water Plant Two, Water Plant One, the reservoir that's over by, between here and the river. So hopefully, we won't have to go through any of that.
Or are we ready to start any dredging or cleaning there at the reservoir?
We do need to. There's part of the reservoir on the north side is already starting to build up.
Right.
So that needs to be done. That's why we're looking at getting that dredger. And when we get that, we're going to start looking at doing some of that work there.
Yeah, I just, I could add one comment on that is we'd have to revise our disposal permit on the site at Water Plant Two. And so we would get our disposal permit in place before we start draining.
Don't we take that to our landfill or our?
No, it gets spread out on site. The Water Plant Sludge is within the 10-acre area that's permitted for disposal.
We don't have, the permit we have does not apply there?
Well, the land application site, like the way we had it, we loaded it a lot more than the annual limit. So we're changing the approved, you know, beneficial land application to a permanent disposal site. And so we're taking care of that paperwork at this time just to get it in place.
The other set of pictures that I provided there, just adding to what Mr. Gaván earlier reported from the little weather disturbance that we had this weekend that affected the island. What affected us was the, that transfer switch that is located in that panel there, that box. The box on the top is, it's sitting there on that panel and that one has a transfer switch. And what it looked like is that that box on the top had some caulking and it looked like the caulking was starting to come apart. So that's where we're thinking that the water seeped into the, through that electrical box. And that's what caused the, we're thinking that's what caused the transfer switch from not turning on the water plant. So that water plant went off about a little after 12:00 or midnight. I got a call at 2:30 from the Water Plant Manager, Noe, and the electrician, Jimmy. And they were there waiting for AEP to go over and turn on the electricity. They couldn't get, they couldn't manually. You could normally turn it on manually, but because of the water that was going in there, they weren't able to do it. It was too much of a hassle. And so for safety reasons, they waited until AEP came in there. Later on, about 5:30 or so, I got a call back that the electricity was back on. So that was, the reason I'm bringing this up is because that right away put my mind thinking how important it would have been to have Water Plant One have this plant gone down. Because it wouldn't have been too much longer since the filtration, the filters, the microfiltration system was, they were running dry. No telling what could have happened. So I was kind of wary about that, but also thinking about Water Plant One. What we're looking at doing here on that electrical panel is building a small room to enclose it even more and to avoid from water going in there. The rest of the plant came on.
It's a nice cabinet.
I'm sorry?
It's a very nice cabinet.
Yes, it is.
It's not waterproof.
The rest of the plant did come on. There are two transfer switches. And the other transfers that worked, which turned on the raw water pump, the chemical plant, and the rest of the other buildings. But this building did not, was affected and did not turn on. So I just wanted to give you that. The only other thing that we had was a tree falling on one of the fences at the gas station number 22, which is at the island. All the other transfer switches at the other plants, wastewater plants that the island turned on, the Andy Bowie part did not go off. It had maintained the electricity throughout because of the substation that AEP has on the north side of the island. So they had constant power. But East La Blanca plant did, the generator did come on. So we were okay with that. And then, of course, the other is the month report that I submit to you for your review concerning the service calls and call-outs that we have for the month of September and comparing them to September of 2018. And just to point out, on that pool meter, again, this, those 16 meters have to do, actually deals with the high-low meter from the Badger, which had it considered two meters in one. So when we put the Mueller meter in there, we have to take off one of the meters from the system. So that's where that report comes in, at 16 meters. And the same thing, when collections, again, we're doing pretty good on that as far as the preventive maintenance that they're doing, it's really helping. So it's cutting some, hopefully, keep cutting down some of those service calls. Any questions? The last report that I have had to do was the meter count per day. Basically, for all practical purposes, we are finished. There are some meters that we still need to do. Two, four, and six-inch meters. As I noted in the report, we have approximately 46. And they're all on the island, Laguna Vista, Fortisabelle, and as well as the island. As far as residential meters, they're all installed. Everything is, seems to be working at this point. So the only thing we have left are those commercial meters. We do have also 106 or so fire line meters that were not included in the original contract. What we plan to do with those meters is we're going to retrofit and put a night cord on there just so we can take the readings off of there. This is going to be, of course, a Mueller night cord, so it'll be reported just like the regular meters. So once we finish those, hopefully, because of the problems they're having in installing those 46 meters, we've had some scheduled, for one reason or another, they get canceled whether it's by us or by our customers. Some of the hotels, for example, there was a couple of them yesterday that canceled. One with the power outage that they had, I guess, because they were not located in the same area for the telephone poles fell. They were booked. Apparently, a lot of people moved over to them. And so we had to cancel that installation of that meter. And again, we're still having problems with a lot of those meters that are in concrete, they're underground, they're hard to find. And so we're having, but this is being done, this is going to be done by our internal crew. We still have some staff, temporary staff that we fired. We plan to keep them probably for about another month, month and a half. And hopefully, by that time, we won't need them. It's going to just be done by our own staff. There is a summary on that sheet that I gave you. As far as the total project contract for the meter was $2,475,759. The savings that we have on a change order because of the leak detection that we had included in the contract was $79,855. The total, we received the final bill from Ferguson was $2,109,660.50. So the top total, the subtotal that we had there was $286,244 as far as. as far as what was the difference between the original contract, unless the savings, unless what they, what we paid Ferguson. What we've paid out and a budget that I kind of included in there, about $10,000 for the next month and a half for the temps, is about $76,782. The pending payment that we have to Mueller or Ferguson is $18,595. The cost of the night cords that we are going to install on the fireline meters is approximately $19,000. So the estimated savings on that is $171,786. Add in the $79,000 on the change order that we have, we have potential savings of $251,641 on that contract.
So the net total cost of installation was 21, $2,100,000 roughly? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. That was the net on the contract, but then we've had these other expenses and temporary employees and so on. That would have been a lot higher had we kept PMI, the subcontractor that Ferguson got a hold of, because there were rated charges, $125 for doing the work that test temporary employees are doing at $10 an hour. The head originally initially told us that if it took him anywhere more than 15 minutes, then it would go on a, on an hour per hour basis, and he said no. That's when we decided to hire the temps and just do the work ourselves. That's the update on the meter count. The only other thing at this time is just to let you know that the city of Edinburgh will be here tomorrow to learn what we've experienced with the AMI meter installation. It looks like they're interested in, in the AMI meters as well. That concludes my report. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, very much. Moving on to item number eight, Charles.
All right, so the first item we have up is the lift station rehabilitation revised scope. And basically, what we've done is, is we originally, in our task authorization, we were going to accelerate construction of Lift Station 25. But with the way the funding's released, you have to have planning at 100% before you really release design dollars. And then, once the design's final, then they'll release construction dollars. So we basically combined Lift Station 25 with the rest of the lift stations in one bid package. And so what that ended up doing was, was cleaning up, you know, the two separate fitting processes, do separate construction contracts. And so with that in place, we're, we can get a credit on the task of $40,159. So, you know, that's one scope change that we have. The second scope change that we talked about is we did complete our force main cleaning inspection for the, it was under contract to do inspection in September. But when it came down to the actual implementation with the dirty water and, you know, just different difficulties with their cameras, they weren't able to perform those inspections. So we ended up just removing it out of the contract. So that's another credit we got for $76,857. And put in the process of, so basically, from those two, you know, parts that are under the authorization where the work's not going to get performed, and we're moving a total scope amount of $117,016.32. So that can just, you know, it goes back into contingency, or we can reallocate it into the project list here on a revenue bond. And so what we did find when we were doing those force main cleans was just, there were some conditions where, for example, Lift Station 17, which is the one that runs along Ithoria, more or less close to South Shore, getting back towards Tignan, that, that pipe is in such bad shape, we didn't even want to try to pick it. So that just got scheduled for replacement. And then for Lift Station 25, which is from Barry, getting across Highway 100 towards Esbel's more or less, when we tried to pick it, the line broke, under the air pressure. I had a repair clamp in front of the gym. So that, and it's also an old asbestos cement pipe, you know, it's a pretty old, probably from the original installation. So those are two force mains that got scheduled for replacement, just because of the condition I found. And so that's part of the scope change where, you know, we're going to see how, how the completed preliminary engineering report provide, you know, allocates the cost. So I mean, I can go to the whiteboard and just, you know, write down visuals for that, if that's okay.
Sure.
As far as just to recap. So basically, with those plans after our inspections or our revision of that, if we're going to do this job, we're going to have to. Because it just needs to be replaced. And so once we replace this force main, we're going to have it tied directly to a manifold with gravity line down the ways line. And when we're doing that, we're able to remove that manifold. There's right now Lift Station Four, which is in heights, has all those private lift stations like ATV and Lift Station 25. It's all tied, so one pressure may, where they're all finding each other in pressure. And so when this job gets done, we're going to be taking all of Barry up of that fight against Lift Station Four through the construction. And then the other benefit when we do this is we're going to decommission the lift station as well. So those stations there, because we'll be able to do that through the new funding that's going to waste. So, so the other benefit here is going to be, I don't spell it wrong. And, and so basically, the, this decommissioning is part of what we're already studying. So, so one of these sites, we can already be able to move it over to, to the revenue and take care of it on that project. And so, and then the other provision we got from the, from just condition assessment is we're going to add this force main. And that's basically our scope changes that we found, you know, as we've been studying the condition of our force main sites. And so I guess part of this, this discussion is, you know, make sure we have by in the board proceeding in this direction, you know, before we go run off with a scope creep that's, you know, not acceptable in the board's eyes or... Yeah, I mean, as far as the report, we're finalized the preliminary engineering report probably in early November. And so this will be the approach for the recommended project to proceed to design and construction. And then there's exhibits here in your packet showing the locations we're talking about. I don't know if there's any questions before we jump on the next one? Okay. The next option is our, or the next project is our water model update. We did receive the, the water model study. I have completed review and gave comments. And the major change from what's in your packet to what I observed is the way you determine number of connections. I mean, number of connections is what dictates your amount of elevated storage tank requirement, your pumping requirement out of the plants. And one thing that there, you know, as of September 2019, we have 6,500 connections. And that's just meters. Like, the way you would determine a connection in TCQ size is a single family unit would include an apartment unit, you know, the, count the doors behind, behind the meters. And so we've got to look at our apartments, our mobile homes, and our condominiums on one meter. And when you look at all those adjustments, I mean, there's, the revision was penned out in this memo. Where now, rather than looking at 7,100, which was adding Long Island Village, we take multifamily as a whole, we're looking at 12,540 connections. And so that's really the number that we should be using to base the amount of elevated storage capacity, the pumping capacity of the water plant, because that's the true definition of connections in terms of size and your capacity.
What's the mandated storage?
Oh, it was, what, 100 gallons per connection? I think that's elevated storage.
Yeah, elevated storage, what are we mandated to carry?
Yeah, well, well, the TCQ rule, it's 100 gallons per connection.
So what changed was really the... What changed was adding the 1,000 from Long Island Village?
Well, what changed is just multifamily as a whole. Because back, back in that period where we were doing a rate study and trying to consider that door charge, we went through a, because we don't typically keep number of units in our invoice. We don't, we don't have to, we only look at one meter, regardless of an apartment having 10 units or 100 units. We don't pay attention to it. But for connections as defined for capacity requirements, you look at those connections behind the meter. And so we went through a pretty heavy effort back during the rate study to try to figure out how many units were behind meters. And so, I mean, I basically sent them over the effort that many of them did together, where we had about, you know, 4,500 condos behind, like, there's maybe 400 accounts for apartments, mobile homes, and condos. And out of those 400 accounts, there's 6,000 single family units behind them. And so that's a major adjustment, you know, that to make, to consider how you want to size your elevated storage for apartments and your pumping capacity out of the plants. And so that's really going to change the scenario one recommendation, which is what's presented, where we just take down Port Isabel and Laguna Vista, to where now we need to keep those in service, plus we're still short 210,000 gallons if we do a 20-year planning period. So that's, that's basically the whole revision that they're still working on to finalize their recommendation. But, but, you know, that's, and then as far as, you know, water distribution, like the bypass at the Causeway, I mean, that more falls under a condition assessment, the, from a hydraulic standpoint. It's really, you know, not essential to, you know, from a pressure standpoint. I mean, they did look at, at pricing for the Luna Boulevard because of the construction project. Like, you know, we have a two-inch section from Gardenia to Capricorn that we should be thinking about if they're going to do that, that, that paving jobs. And plus all those two-inch crossings, we probably want to look at, you know, getting those upgraded ahead of the paving. So they're working on that estimate in their model or in the Epi report. And then they also did a water age analysis. And because we, you know, with our off-season, we have water out there more than seven days. And especially looking at that north end of the island with Sanbar Estates, you know, getting a house built in the next year, you know, at Pearl Stead, looking at developing those 29 acres at Beach Access Six. And so the way they looked at water age to maintain that chlorine residual out there is they did the existing conditions that demonstrate that the water had just sat out there too long. And then they, they, during off-season, they just take Andy Bowie elevated storage tank out of service. And then the other one is just to have a flushing program. And so for that flushing, they did an analysis, flushing 240,000 gallons every other day, which would be more or less around Beach Access Six. And then like that, we can maintain that chlorine residual during off-season in, you know, up through Sanbar Estates. And so that kind of tends to work out where we need a place to put that outfall, which is, there's a drainage right away there dedicated at Beach Access Six and potential development. That would have to go through annexation, which would be a separate discussion. And that was part of, you know, what we're bringing to your attention. So, so as far as... I mean, I don't know if, if, in terms of scope change for the way the tax bond is listed. I mean, as far as this line, I, this will be more like a condition assessment. It's not necessarily going to be, you know, part of bond contract. So this could be something that sort of erase, if we were to do that, and just focus like this one being covered through revenue fund, replacing valves, you know, that sort of thing. And just not really consider it further than, if we're going to...
Yeah, yeah. Then have we gotten the testing back on those valves?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's found out, I mean, we're going to find a way to attach, restore the 10-inch Pier 19 to the, to the blue line on the causeway. Because right now, there's no circulation there, so we can just take care of that there, so that circulation. And we did verify that there's a 16-inch line from the gateway, run a parallel to the 16-inch line, run a fill with vehicles. So there are two lines that all intersect at that deep one that we're, there at the... So, I mean, we have to lock it, plus the old drainage. So, I mean, I would say really this...
Do you have a budget for that yet?
Um, well, for the valve, please?
Well, the, to create the bypass.
No, I, we haven't cost the valves. I mean, it didn't even come out of the water model as, as a project to, you know, to do some things.
Yeah, yeah, because we can pay, probably pay for that separately.
Yeah, exactly. But I think this is one that's kind of off the target for a bond project standpoint. It'll, it'll, it'll get considered through our bond law, or I know, you know, revenue, that's what I mean, in terms of how they're going to fix valves, all that kind of stuff. This gave me flashbacks when I was in college, in a presentation, and realized I wasn't using the proper marker on a light and nothing erased.
Charles, I could never see you doing something like that. Having to get change orders back then, huh?
It wasn't training.
Yeah, I guess you have to do that when you're in college, so you don't do it when you're in real world.
Charles, in reading this, the Freeze-Nickel memorandum, basically, we're okay as far as storage goes to 2013.
Great, great.
But we're, we're really not, in the sense that the, the island would be okay, but a few years from now, I think it's gonna, we're not going to be in good shape on the mainland. We'll, we'll need to add something in a few more years.
Yeah, but the TCQ is okay with that, but our operations, we need the facility, the tanks to have the storage in case we work on the treatment plant for some reason, we need that storage to back us up for a couple of hours or more.
Right.
That's why we need the storage.
Yeah, no, I would, I would try to stick with, seeing as to how we're going to need it either five, 10, or 15 years from now, might, might want to just consider it now, because it's going to be the same amount of work trying to get it done then as it is now, possibly even more expensive.
Well, we can still stick to a plan of one new tank to replace two tanks, but that tank would have to be 600,000 gallons, because, you know, that would cover us for the growth projected through 2040.
When was the last time the public approved a bond for us? 15?
The May 2011.
2011, yes, for the 2012 one.
Yeah, with the propositions one, which we've implemented, and proposition two, which is the seawater, which probably a discussion of finance.
You'll have some information on that.
And we never implemented two.
No, we never issued a date. But we have the authorization.
Actually, it should have expired by now, it was only good for five years. The authorization was only good for five years, I thought it was.
We asked bond counsel about that, and bond counsel said that there, technically, there is no expiration.
Expiration date on it?
Yeah, but of course, as, as time goes on, it's, it's likely that the Attorney General would, would contest it if we were to try to issue it, if it was something that was passed a long time ago.
And Eddie has some information on it, on his agenda.
Yeah, but that concludes my report from upstairs.
I've got a question or comment, just some clarification, I guess. On the page three or four, on the third bullet point towards the bottom of that paragraph, it says, "The model validation does not negate the possible effect of head loss across the system due to partially closed valves, but does highlight the effect, the effect frictional head losses have on the system between water treatment plant number two and South Padre Island, which should be improved with water treatment plant number one online." And I guess that's the clarification I'm looking for is should, the definition of should.
Oh, oh, should shill and make, well, should's advisory, but, but in general, like, like Water Plant One? Like, with that Water Plant One online?
Can we realistically expect better water pressure?
Oh, absolutely, because the, the high-service pumps that are at Water Plant One, and its access to, you know, the lines through the causeway, vice versa, it's, it's just going to improve our, our pumping capacity. Without Water Plant One, we don't have...
So that really should, I mean, should, should be will.
Oh, it should be shell, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That, that's why, because, because we're going through a lot of expense to, to maybe it will work or not. Maybe it'll increase the pressure, I would rather know that it will, definitely.
Yeah, with, with Water Plant One offline, we essentially have to let the ground storage in Port Isabel fill up by getting it sort of back in through the high-service pumps. And then we have a period for it to pump out until those tanks are drained.
And that's basically a message from my wife. She says, "I will gladly pay more if I can get better water pressure."
Right, right.
I'm just speaking for her.
So the, yeah, I mean, that, that loop for, from Gardenia to Capricorn will help without it big time. And then the, the, you know, pumping capacity of Water Plant One, if you don't know.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles.
I would, I would just say to our, our media consultants who are still here, just real quick, when we do go, I guess we don't, when we talk about this to the public, I would personally talk about things like Alex just said. I think it's important to say we want to improve water pressure, water quality, these things, rather than we want to build another storage and we want to build this water line.
And I, and I think that that's, you're absolutely right, because that's the job we have, is that we have to make a connection between the money we're asking for and what they're going to get for that money.
We have to make it look and sound good, and it has to be what, how, how you're going to get that. We determine how you're going to get that, but we're selling that high quality and that better pressure and that... better pressure and that...
It's important to identify the need that people have in their own lives, and that this is how we're going to meet that need, just like anything else, rather than just, you know.
A lift station.
We want to increase from five to seven MGD, right? Nobody cares about that. And I wouldn't vote for that, right?
They want to know if it's going to taste better.
And they, they quite frankly, wouldn't even, you know, perhaps not understand, we want to, you know, retrofit Water Plant One, like, that's just, is pretty esoteric for people. So I think really addressing exactly how the changes we will implement will affect their life, which means when they turn on the tap, when they get in the shower, right, that's basically what they care about.
Yeah, what I care about... When it rains, the sewer's not going to come up their tub.
That, that too, right?
So identifying the why is very important. Additionally, you've got to figure out what the benefits are and deliver that message. That message, lastly, has to be delivered now. So the quicker we get all these things together, the messages that we want to convey, the better for all of us.
Did the blue tap dissolve yet?
No, not yet. Actually, I didn't know you weren't supposed to drink it. They taste pretty good.
Thank you very much. Very well received. Good comment. Moving on to item number nine, Director of Finance report.
I wanted to bring to the attention of the board an issue that was brought up by one of the members of our bond planning committee, who was concerned about the notice to purchasers that is, is something that's given out when a real estate transaction takes place anywhere within our service area. This notice to purchasers is something that, it's, it's required by state law. It's in the Texas Water Code. The entire text of it is in the Water Code, so I can't change it. The, the confusion is, is coming out because the, the, the numbers on this notice to purchasers shows thirty-nine thousand as being the amount that was approved by, by the voters, and what was issued was twenty-three.
It is a million dollars and a thousand...
Yeah, a million dollars, I'm sorry. Thirty-nine million dollars and, and twenty-three million dollars are the two numbers on that notice to purchasers. So it was suggested that, that perhaps we should instead be showing what we, what we currently owe. Unfortunately, because of the way that the statute is written, I, I don't have that flexibility of showing what we owe. I have to fill in the, the form according to what is, it's being asked for. So those, those numbers are coming from the two propositions that were approved in May of 2011. Proposition number one, so the total for those two propositions was thirty-nine thousand four hundred and five, thirty-nine million four hundred and five thousand. Proposition one was primarily used to finance the microfiltration at Water Plant Number Two, the Quattis Pump Station and pipeline improvements. Proposition number two was for the seawater desalination facility. Proposition one was partially issued in 2012 for twenty-one million, and the remaining two, you know, two-point-six was issued in 2016. So that, the, the entire amount for Proposition Number One has been issued, and that's what the twenty-three million dollar number on that notice to purchasers is. The, the, the other amount, the fifteen-point-seven million for Proposition Number Two was never issued. So that was approved by the voters, but never issued. And so I just wanted to, to clarify that, because some of the, some people are misunderstanding what those numbers represent. So what, what do we actually owe? What we owe is thirteen and a half million. That's the, the principal due on the, on the tax-supported debt. And that's expected to be retired in 2032. So every, every year, we're making annual payments, one-point-three, five million dollars. We're, we're making these payments. That includes principal and interest. And so that's, that number's going to, going to keep going down unless we issue more, more tax-supported debt. Any questions about that? So that's all I have for the Director of Finance report.
I had received a call from someone that was asking that if we really owe thirty-nine million dollars, and that's what I called maybe, to, to try to clarify this, because that's, that's what they saw on the website, that's what they saw. But they didn't understand what, the difference between the information that was being requested and what we actually owe. And so I could just see that comment just going wild, just like, oh, no, they already owe forty million, you know, so that's not true.
I've put together a lot of contracts, and I've never had a customer buyer, seller inquire. The print is so small, the whole thing's a little...
It's one of, you know, many sheets that they have to sign when they're purchasing property.
We do need to include that Watersmart handout pamphlet in water bills. I got my recent water bill for my condo, and it wasn't in there. So we just need to keep putting those in every month until we got a high degree of...
We sent one letter with, with every cycle, has, has now gotten, I think...
Twice.
The, the ladders inviting them to sign up. We also changed the, the message. There's a small space on, on the bill, on the face of the bill itself, that I can change a message. And so I changed that message to show inviting people to, to register for the program. At the, at the recent chamber event that was promoted, we handed out flyers and telling people about the, the, the benefits of signing up. And then for those people that said, you know, "I don't have a, a water bill, you know, I, I rent," or, you know, "It's paid by my condo association," I signed them up for outage notifications and said, you know, "If we have to shut off the, the water in your city, do you want to know about it? If you do, then we sign you up." And so that's what we did to try and encourage people to, to sign up. And, and as we, a normal part of our process, when somebody's going to get a high water bill, we, we call them, notify them, send them emails, and in that process, we're also...
The lag time is a little, is a little delayed, like, two days before you get that notice. That, that's not, it's not as real instant time as you think it is, though. The delay is about a day and a half or two days.
Yes, and it, sometimes it's one day, sometimes it's two days. Yeah, I've noticed that.
But it used to be, in the old system, you might not know about...
For thirty days. No, I'm not complaining. It is, it is a little lagging in, in real time, but it's like...
And I think if, if the message, the alert goes out by text, it's probably, at least in my case, it would be looked at more often than the email alert. But I would suggest you still keep putting in those flyers. That last message you said that you put on the bill, if you did put it in, I didn't read it. I mean, I opened it up, I looked at the amount, and then I tossed it, because it's paid by drafts, so...
Yes, yes, I understand.
It is.
We can, uh, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can, we get them all back, they don't need to hold them. So I, I like it. We're putting them on the website, and then when you, um, attend any functions, we're handing out flyers, and we can go to, to cookhouse, but we can't...
And we need to give those tablets out. That's an excellent deal for people to receive those tablets. A lot of people don't realize that, that toilet, you know, spending is...
I want to show you also, we have, this was our most popular item that we handed out to people to promote our, our district. These are smartphone ranges. They're shaped like water drops, and people love the, you can stick them on the back of your phone, use it as a, as a prop, to prop up your, your phone as a little stand, and they're, people are, are coming by and, and asking for these.
That's nice.
Can I get one?
Yeah. Yes.
So part of the thing that we can do, we want to take every opportunity that we can. So every time we hand something out, we want to get an email. And even if we have to insert their information for them, it's important that we do so. Why? Because when people are late at night on their emails, it's important that at their time, at their leisure, they look at our website. And that's the whole point, to, to send people to our website. There's a lot of great information there, and with the updates that are about to happen, it's going to be even better.
What else?
Moving on to item number nine, excuse me, item number ten, consider and discuss for possible approval, Texas County District Retirement TCD RS proposed contribution rate plan of fifteen percent for 2020.
So this was a, an item that, that we, we budgeted. We're trying to get ahead of the, of the curve a little bit to try to stabilize the rate that we're, that we're paying. This past year, we paid fourteen-point-three-nine percent, and the amount that, that TCD RS is, is, has calculated as the required amount is actually going down from fourteen-point-three-nine to fourteen-point-two. And I budgeted fifteen. And if you look at, in this report, they're planning over the next few years, if you, if you flip back to the, to the third page, where it says planned rate projection, the amount over the next five years is projected to go up. So what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get ahead of the, the curve a little bit.
But not the percentage, what's the dollar amount, I guess? Do you have a dollar, projected dollar, not percentage?
No, this is as a percentage of payroll. This is as, as a percentage of payroll. So they calculate what the, what the required...
Because you have a dollar amount that you actually paid in last year. I was just trying to figure out what the dollars were compared to the percentage. I get the percentage, but with the actual dollar you paid, by just going up three-quarters of a percent, how much does it change the actual dollar amount going in? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yes, the dollar amount...
It's not an extra hundred thousand dollars, I guess, is the, for instance...
No, I, I don't have that number offhand.
I was just trying to make sure that, that number wasn't that big, because you have a lot of new employees. So that changes, the, the unfunded liability changes a little bit. If you follow the formula, there's more to it than just fifteen percent and go forward, but...
Yes, I mean...
Is it in the financial report?
No, I don't have that, that, that number with me. I used it when I was calculating our budget, but I don't have it with me right now.
It's like you're saying, maybe for the whole year, three hundred?
I know, it's under three hundred.
Fifteen thousand dollars?
What the, what the difference, what the increased dollars going in are versus just the percentage? I'm trying to block the item, I was just trying to...
I'll get back with you.
I mean, we have to pay for it regardless. I know all the words.
I can report that to you. But what, what we're actually doing is we, I needed an, an action item to be approved by the board to raise our elected rate above the, the required rate. So that's what I'm asking the board to do, to do. This is something that's already been...
Is this an action item?
Yes, it is.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Just whenever you have the dollars, it, just curious what the dollar, projected dollar amount is, not the percentage amount, that's all. I should have called and asked earlier, but I apologize. Moving on to item number eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of a resolution adopting the investment policy for fiscal year 2019, 2020 of Laguna Madre Water District Resolution Number 178-10-19.
This is a requirement that we adopt the investment policy every year. There are no changes to the, to the language.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed or questions? No? None? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval of bad write-offs for the fiscal year 2019.
So what these are, this is in, in two pages. These are accounts that are no longer likely to be collected. They're, they're old, the, the customers don't have active accounts, so they're unlikely to be collected, and therefore I can't be carrying them as, as receivables anymore. So the first page is utility accounts, and the second page is miscellaneous invoices.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yes.
Item or invoice number without name of the, the customer, invoice 18010079? How can, how can that company, corporation, how can we dismiss that? That's a decent amount.
I have, I have good news on, on that particular one. On, on Friday, we received a check for three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars, seventy-three cents. So that number is actually, we don't have to write that one off. So we, we did collect that, that debt. It took, took a while since January 2018.
I mean, that's, that's a unique customer. I don't know how that would have...
Yes, so, so that's, that's good news. So that, that reduces that, that ten thousand amount for miscellaneous invoices to seven thousand five fifty-eight. If you combine that with the utility customers, so the, the total that I'm asking for today, nine thousand two thirty-three sixteen.
So move. Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lallan, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item thirteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial reports for August 2019.
I'll move to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos.
Second.
Seconded by, I don't know which was, Dr. Lallan, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item fourteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of the purchase of four 2020 model year pickup trucks.
Chairman, members of the board, we are replacing four units this fiscal year. We use byboard, this time we did not advertise. We are saving on the cost for advertising on the newspaper, and we are saving also time. So staff is recommending a worth of purchase of the four pickup trucks to Carlo Country Chevrolet for a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars.
Is this all within the budget for the year?
Yes, it was approved on the budget.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Lallan, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Drive them carefully, please. Item fifty, keep them washed. Item fifteen, consider and review expenditures from September sixteenth, 2019 through October fifteenth, 2019. Any questions on one in particular, otherwise ask to approve them all?
Move to approve.
Motion for appro, or motion to recognize by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Dr. Lallan, are all those acknowledged for view?
Aye.
If you have any opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item sixteen, executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, BTC, a Government Code Section 551001, Ed. Secrets under 551071, Consultation of the Attorney, Update on Legal Matters Concerning Rate Pairs, Appeal of the Raw Water. I have a motion to go into an executive session.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? We're in executive session.
I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
At six oh seven PM. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
We have an executive session. Update on legal matters concerning ratepayers' appeal of raw water rate. No action at this time. Need 17 consideration, action on executive sessions, there is no action. Item 18, meeting adjourned at 6:09 PM.